Seven forty. It's seven forty six P M and I'll call roll which includes the chair, myself, Luke Maruziak. Vice Chair Andrew Testman is out. Commissioner Aliff. Not present. Commissioner Goodman.
Present.
Commissioner Lambert. Not present. Commissioner Mather.
Present.
And Commissioner Smith is not present, although he may join later. And just for the record, our council liaison, council member Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Ross.
I'm here.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And if that's the case, I'd like to move that we approve the agenda, today's agenda as written. Have a second.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
One second, can we have a discussion real quick?
Yes.
Okay, I would wonder if looking at the legislative policy items and regulations that there is intended to be a presentation. I am wondering if the commission thinks that it would be better to actually table that to the next meeting. When hopefully there'd be more commissioners present, if the intent is for the planning commission to be hearing this presentation. Three normal, regular, sitting appointed members, however you want to call them. Out of the seven may not justify hearing the presentation tonight and maybe be better if there's a solid majority of them present. I'm wondering how the the commission feels about removing that item from the agenda.
I think it's good, good point. I, it makes sense to me. We maybe want to have an introductory discussion, but I agree with the presentation. We could wait until we have more members present. Commissioner Goodman, how do you feel?
I I'm neutral on the, on the proposal, but it does appear that that's our only item tonight. So.
Okay.
I mean, it, it looks like the presentation is not too long, and I think we have somebody who, I think we have somebody I saw from Elder Clay from L D C who made the time to come this evening, so I'm, I would lean towards going ahead with it, I suppose.
Okay, okay. Mayor Ross.
No, I concur with Commissioner Goodman. We do have the consultant here and this is recorded, so the other commissioners can always go back and and watch it. And if there needs to be a, an additional discussion, we can always invite the consultant to come back, but I I prefer, prefer just going have a presentation.
Okay. Yes, Councilor Johnson.
I, I forgot that this is the 21st century and we can record things. That's a very good point. And also that we have the consultant here to go ahead and do it. So yeah, I think we should go and do it.
Okay.
I retract my. Never mind.
You didn't make a motion. So we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, at this point, are there any public comments for items on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to proceed first to introductions before we get to the council liaison report.
So for for the plan question, I'd just like to give a quick introduction. We have a new community development director. Emily Arteche, she's here on, for those of you who are on the screen, you can track where my hands is pointing. Well, maybe you can't. I'm in her way.
Come up to the podium.
Yeah, so I'll have her come up and then we have a new senior planner, Dinah Reed. She's also here in attendance. So if you A had any questions. B, you should recognize them because they're going to be coming to playing commission in the future and you know, come and say hi, introduce yourself if you're in person. But otherwise I'll leave some room for them to, you know, discuss anything that they want to bring up to the language mission if you want. Yeah.
Happy to be here.
They're both happy to be here. Well, I'll work on my introductions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dylan. We have now the council liaison report.
Yeah, I actually couldn't really remember when it was the last time that I was here. So I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights of things we've been working on recently with the, the council. First of all, the C I P is moving forward. We did have an open house and a few people came and asked some questions about the various items that were in it. I have it in the back there in a binder. I go get it if there are any questions about it. But you can find it on the, the website. And the council is currently discussing it. I believe that in the next few weeks, we are intending to to move forward with that C I P. That doesn't mean that everything will end up on it, but we'll at least start looking at taking some action in the very near future. Let's see what else. For the sidewalk replacement program. I feel like I'm kind of perseverating on this. Maybe I'm the only person who cares so much about it because I feel like I bring it up all the time. But it is proceeding very well. They were just out on my street grinding down one of the the pieces that have been uplifted a little bit. I'm hoping that the one that's outside my house gets gets replaced soon. But at any rate, that is moving forward. I definitely see some comments about it sometimes on Facebook, so I like to bring up that that's moving forward. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention that I have to, of course, dance around to some degree, given my position, but that the Millsite F E I S, that's the final environmental impact statement, statement, I think it was, anyway. Was, I believe that the correct phrase is that it was approved by the hearing examiner. But the more important thing is that the planned commercial industrial plan was recommended for approval by the hearing examiner. That doesn't mean that it was approved by the council or anything. It just means that it was recommended for approval. And the council will be taking that up over the course of this year. Of course, I can't say really much about it other than that, that is progressing. And I believe that the intent is for there to be action sometimes that fall on that. But it's going to be a lot of deliberation by the council. And if there are any questions about it, then I might defer to staff to some degree, just so that I'm protecting myself on that issue. But I'd be happy to field any questions to the best of my ability from the commission.
There was one and I brought this up last time. I think you mentioned, anyway, the pool. How does that stand on the C I P?
So right now, it is the, the proposed budget is for somewhere around $30 million. I think it's 29 million technically somewhat, some odd. And that, if the C I P as it stands were to be approved by the council, then it would be on there. And it has a number of different funding sources. Hopefully, there could be some help from the school district that currently has not been finalized. But, but that is one of the things we're looking at. There are some funds, I believe, from fund balances that have been carried over that I believe would in part go to that. As well as the potential for a bond, which we'd be looking into as that project came closer to being approved. Now that said, my understanding of how our city approaches C I P projects is that although the council adopts a C I P, which essentially tells the administration to go forth and start working on getting these projects going. Each project then comes back to council for the final approval. So even if that is on the C I P and the council approves it, that item would still have to come back with the specifics of exactly what it would be, or at least exactly what the funding would be and exactly how much it would cost. So that's my understanding of how exactly that works. We did have some lengthy discussions, at least in parks and public works about some of the specifics of what will be desired. And I, I believe that there is, although I will not speak for the council, I believe that it that it seems as though there is some consensus around a desire for six lanes rather than three lanes. But again, we haven't approved anything finally, so I, I can't speak for that as being the actual thing that will occur, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Questions about where we are?
Yeah, yeah. I was just thinking six lines would be a swim meet. Three lines you couldn't do on. It's interesting. That's very interesting. Okay. No, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other question? Any other questions for Councilmember Johnson? Okay. And since there we'll review the minutes later at the next meeting and there's no permit to review, why don't we proceed with the next agenda item, which is the housing action plan 101.
Great. Do you want me to go ahead and share Dylan? And I can run the slides?
If you let me do a quick thing, while I'm giving introduction to the project. I'm going to go back and make you a panelist. How's that work?
I think I already am.
Oh, you are? Okay. Would you like to present then?
Yeah, I can go ahead and share.
Okay, yeah, then go ahead and take it off. Or take, yeah, whatever that phrase is supposed to be.
Great. Well, Planning Commission members, it's wonderful to be here tonight. Again, my name is Clay White. I'm the Director of Planning with L D C. Just a little bit about me. I've been a planner in Washington State for over 20 years. It just, the years just keep adding on. A great majority of the time I worked for cities and counties, so I really enjoy being in front of planning commissions, working with communities, gives me a lot of joy. And this is a real value add project, so look forward to providing just a little overview tonight. I'll share my screen. Great. Hopefully, we're ready to go now. And this will be short, but you know, what I'm hoping is, you know, for any questions that you have, you know, just know I'm I'm, I'm open for having a conversation as we go forward. You don't have to feel like you need to wait till the end. So just a few goals for the planning commission tonight. Just would like to provide you a high level overview of the project. Talk a little bit about how this project can help inform your comprehensive plan update. This is a project that has the ability to not be the plan you develop and then it goes on the shelf and then you, then you say a couple of years later, like, what happened to that plan? I think it really can be a tools in the tool belt plan and give you some ideas and things that you can utilize as part of your comprehensive plan update. So I'd like to just talk a little bit how we can connect the two. We'll talk a little bit about the project's schedule and then just conversation and questions. So along the way, just feel free to ask any questions that you have. And I, you know, we'll be spending some time together as we go through this project, as we develop kind of drafts and we're going through, you know, developing the final housing action plan. So, you know, one of those other purposes tonight is just introduce you to the project and then the next time we chat. It won't be the first time that we've had a conversation about the project. So, you know, the more times we can have, have a conversation, then I think the more we'll get out of it as we move forward. So this project really stemmed out of House Bill 1923, which passed a couple of years ago. Additional dollars were added through the state budget. And, you know, it really came from the acknowledgement in Olympia that we're have a housing crisis. And so House Bill 20, 1923 provided some optional grant programs for cities to be focusing on, on housing issues. And there were several things that cities could apply for back in 2019. And then as it's evolved on, one of the options is certainly a housing action plan. And the goal of a housing action plan is really to encourage construction of additional affordable and market rate housing in a greater variety of housing types and at prices that are accessible to a greater variety of, or a variety of incomes, including strategies aimed at for profit, single family home market. I think the other thing that the legislature, you know, they didn't stay specifically in the bill is that every community is different, different issues going on, different circumstances. And so there's really an opportunity to tailor a plan around your community's needs. And hopefully that's what we'll accomplish here. Three primary elements of a housing action plan, and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. There's a housing needs analysis is really getting housing data. And if you know what's happening in your community revolving around housing, then you can start thinking about, well, if we have these issues that are identified in the data, we can identify strategies and actions that could address those issues. And come up with lots of options for you. Again, kind of that tools and the tool about your housing action plan, that's your strategies and actions. So you know, if you, if you know what's going on, just what are the things that you could do in your code or in the way you process permits, or maybe there's some ideas that other communities have taken on. You know, what are a variety of different ways that you could address the housing issues that you want to tackle within the city? And the nice thing is that you're able to come up with, we, we're going to help develop a whole list of possible strategies and actions for you. And, and you don't necessarily have to adopt all of them, but at least it gives you some ideas for things that you may want to do in the future. So I'll say this more than once, but this is not a regulatory plan. And this does not end up in legislation. This plan does not result in your code or policies changing. It's really just, you know, coming up with those ideas and having a community, you know, having the opportunity to have a community conversation about housing. And then community engagement is certainly important to this project as well. So the housing action plan, again, those kind of three pieces, we'll talk about community engagement in a moment. But what the statute talks about is your housing needs assessment. And for this project, it's being done a little bit differently. There's a separate firm that is doing the housing needs analysis for this project, so it's on a separate timeline, but that's being developed right now. And I know they're coordinating with city staff. But really, it's to quantify the existing and projected housing needs for all income levels. You're going to analyze population and employment trends. And then, and then have the evaluation and, you know, be able to take a look at, you know, what did you plan for in terms of housing and what's occurred and what's the gap? And then you can think about what are the things you might want to do about it. There's also, well, this will come up a couple of times, but the there is a requirement as you do your comprehensive plan update to do housing needs assessment. So what I'm hoping is that what gets developed by the F C S group in blue line will help meet the needs for your comprehensive plan update. So you're not having to redo that again. So it's like, you're not only doing a housing action plan, but you're also checking off some boxes for your comprehensive plan update. Boy, wouldn't that be nice? Because it's a big project that you have to take on. In terms of the housing action plan, consider, consider strategies to minimize displacement of low income residents resulting from redevelopment. Redevelopment, you're developing strategies to increase the supply of housing and variety of housing types. And then you've got a schedule of programs. So, you know, when would you consider maybe taking action on these ideas? So this is just what the statute says. And you're not limited to these things, but these are kind of the ballpark type of ideas that we want to. So if you want to focus on things like affordable housing, we can focus on affordable housing. If you're wanting to look at your code and look at options to, you know, to, you know, speed up when, how long it takes to get a permit, we can look at those things and we can, we can really open it up so you can have a suite of options going forward for you to look at. And we'll, we'll chat about that. Public participation, what it talks about is just, you know, involving the community members, community groups, builders, realtors, advocates, housing advocates, religious groups. We're still working with Dylan and the team on once we get the housing needs analysis, how we want to engage the community. If you have thoughts about that tonight, certainly feedback's a gift. I'm sure, you know, we'll be putting together a website where people can get information, could have some small surveys. We may do some, just reach out to interest groups to get their feedback on their perception of housing and Snohomish or gather information that you feel would be important as we develop strategies and actions. So we've got a wide open options here. So, you know, and I think the important thing is to, is to make sure we tailor the engagement process to what works best in your community. So it doesn't all work the same. Sometimes some communities are better with, you know, online options. In some communities, you got to physically be reaching out to people. So there is certainly not a one size fits all approach. And again, we're not looking at any code or policy changes. We're just looking at options that you could take on if you chose to take legislative action in the future. We're early on, we've done our project kickoff. We're working with the other consultant group on the housing needs analysis. But there's some things that we can be doing in the, in the meantime. So as that housing data is getting pulled, we'll be working with the city team on preparing the engagement process for the project, reviewing housing policies, reviewing the code. So we can kind of match up what we're finding in your, in your policies and your code with the housing data that comes out. And then we can start really kind of focusing in on, you know, what you want to be tackling. So this is kind of a restatement of what we just talked about, but I think it's important when we're, you know, especially talking to the community about breaking down what a housing action plan is and what it isn't. And a lot of times when we're talking about housing issues, we're talking about a lot of change in our community, which is really hard. You know, we've got, I think, in the four county region Kitsap, Pierce, Snohomish and King, we were projecting 1.6 million more people here by 2050. So that's a lot of change. And if we're, if most people are all going to be living within existing urban areas, there's tough choices. But I think that when we're talking about housing policy, we can talk about things like, you know, finding, having housing options for young families that want to move to a community. Is that possible? Can your kids live in your community? You know, if you have family members that are wanting to move out of their larger home and find something smaller as they age, is that an option in your city or would they have to be able to move? And so if we can break down these conversations, I think it really helps spur some options you may want to look at. So starting with those key questions, then you pull the housing data that's your housing needs analysis, how, how affordable is housing today? You know, how is the city expected to grow in the future? And what kind of housing are you needing to, you know, or expected to meet your needs? There's also, there's a new provisions in the housing element requirements for your comprehensive plan update. There was a bill that passed, not this last session, but the session before House Bill 1220. It added a lot of new requirements to the housing element, which you'll be looking at as part of your comprehensive plan update. So you know, there's some kind of match between what kind of housing do you need to meet your population targets? And then also, you know, reviewing your housing element to make sure you're providing for the housing types that are identified within the updated statute. It's pretty complicated now. The housing element's gotten pretty granular. I'm hoping that, that when the guidance comes out from the state this year, it provides cities some really good guidance as you update your comprehensive plans. Obviously, your housing target's going to be much smaller than a lot of other cities as you're a pretty built out community. And, but this will still be a challenge. And then, of course, we're going to move into engagement. And then, of course, based on the engagement that we receive mixed with the housing data and analysis of your code and policy that we can develop strategies and actions. So this is just kind of an example of what it could look like for strategies and actions. So strategies are kind of like those topical issues that you're wanting to take on. So it could be looking at, if, if preventing and mitigating displacement was an issue the city was looking at, then you would say, well, then what would we do about this particular strategy? You know, how, how would you actually take any action? And that's where the actions come in. So you could have strategies such as preventing mitigating displacement or reducing development costs or providing a wider variety of housing types. Actions could look like, you know, if you didn't have a multifamily tax exemption program of adopting that to encourage affordable housing, providing financial incentives to encourage construction of missing middle, that would be like duplexes, triplexes, townhomes. And then also like, you know, just kind of unique things like some jurisdictions might want to switch how they calculate parking as a way to, you know, provide more developable area in their city or right size parking where they have transit options. So the actions are really where it comes down to. And what we can do for you is we can, where, where we have things you're wanting to look at, we can provide you a great overview of, you know, really, what would, what action would you take if you were going to do it? Like, what would be the code change? Describe it, describe it for you. Provide the pros and cons or the advantages and disadvantages of taking that action. We can highlight other jurisdictions that may have taken the same or similar actions. Sometimes it's nice to know if you're doing something like, well, who else, who else has done this and has it been successful? So you'll have a, a good write ups for, we know, whatever we choose here, so you can really walk through it. So think of it as you're going to have something that's ready to go. If you decided, hey, in the future, we want to, you know, take action and update our codes or policies. I'll tell you the, the program's been successful. So those that came before you that have, have adopted housing action plans, many of them are now implementing them. That doesn't mean they're adopting all of the actions in their plan. Most of them are only taking two or three at a time, but, but it is, they are kind of taking them from idea to, to code changes. So that's kind of neat to see. So this isn't a requirement of a housing action plan, but I just hate to see you spend your time and energy on something if you're not getting a full bang for the buck. So I mean, I really have talked to Dylan some and be working with the team to see how much can we get done that will assist you with your comprehensive plan update as well. So the Growth Management Act requires you to plan for, you know, your population and housing and capital facilities and utilities and a variety of things for your required elements in your comprehensive plan. But housing is certainly one of them. Population is another. Your comprehensive plan is updated every 10 years. It's looking out 20 years. So your next comprehensive plan will be a 2024 to 2044 update. And it's due in December of 2024. So there was a, I think, House Bill 1241 this last year that extended the deadline from June to December. So you've got a little bit more time. Primarily because there's been some bills that passed over the last couple of years, and this will give you some additional time to work through those. So this project should address your housing needs analysis, which is a piece of your comprehensive plan update. We'll also be doing a housing policy review where we can do a gap analysis that looks at the difference between new regional and countywide planning policies and your current policies. And then we can kind of identify where you might want to take a look at new policies moving forward. And then we should also be able to, you know, if, if you have a population to plan for, there could be some of the strategies and actions that would actually help you accomplish planning for more housing or people. So you might want to take these to accomplish that goal in the future as well. So that'll be, that'll be available for you. So it's a, you're, you're getting a lot done with one project. So the timing's really perfect for this. And just kind of showing you on them, on your map here. You know, your update happens every 10 years. It used to be eight and it was seven and the legislature seems to change it all the time. 10 years is a good timeframe, but there's a lot of work that is, that happens before you get to your comprehensive planet update. So you may be starting it, you know, midway through 2022, maybe it's a little later going into 2023. But you know, you've got regional policies, countywide planning policies in your comp plan and just that, that end marker there says mid 2024, that's now changed to the end of 2024. So you have a little more time. So this project plays really nicely into all of the work that's happened thus far. It, you know, as an example, we're going to be looking at a kind of a gap analysis of your comprehensive plan policies with the new countywide planning policies and regional policies from Vision 2050. Both of those are now done. So now it's great timing to be able to do that analysis. So this project really lines up really well. So our schedule, we're a little dependent on the folks doing the housing needs analysis, but I think that section's going fine. So what, what I'd really like to see is if the housing needs analysis is getting done late this summer, then we'll be working with the planning commission late summer and the fall. Because what I'd really like to see is a draft of the housing action plan issued in December, because then we could really take comments for a significant amount of time or just have it open for review through the holidays and into the January. I mean, nobody wants it, no one likes it when a doc, a document drops right before Christmas and they don't have a chance to comment. So if we can use a, a long period of time there for people to be able to comment, then we can meet back up with the planning commission and take it through that legislative process by developing a final housing action plan, which will then come back through a planning commission and the Community Development Committee and City Council. And we'll have plenty of time to do that this spring. The, the plan adoption has to occur by June 30th of 2023. That's the state budget deadline. But, you know, I think that we can probably get it done sooner. It's just a matter of, you know, how many conversations that y'all would like to have when we're going through this. But, you know, at this point, we're on track. The, you know, next steps for us are really just working with the city on the engagement strategy and starting our deep dive into the, the code and policies. So at this point, I can just So at this point I can just stop sharing and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So I have a couple of questions, but Dylan, do you have something?
Oh, no, no, go for it.
So let me first do a quick round robin and see if there's any questions from the commissioners. Looking for hands.
I do have two quick questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Goodman.
And thank you very much for the, for the presentation. First question is, you know, I think you mentioned a couple of times that the housing action plan does not change code or policy. So I'm wondering by adopting a strategy in, in the plan, what is, is the city committing to anything? Or is it just a statement to say, you know, if it comes up, we will, you know, use this strategy for, in such and such a situation.
Yeah, you're, you have to, part of the project, you'll develop kind of a schedule of when you might take actions, but you're not committing yourself to any legislative action. I mean, I think that the way that the programs worked pretty well is it's ended up identifying some easy pickings types of issues. And then it's also some complimentary type changes that, that fit like right along with what a city is trying to do. But it doesn't commit you to having to take legislative action on anything that's identified.
Um, thank you. And then other question is, I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, my, my understanding is that the ridge is largely under development agreement for some, some time, you know, another decade or two, or whatever it is. So I'm wondering, you know, if, if the majority of this work is going to be focusing on Old Snoqualmie? And if there's any, any anything to explore or any, any potential movements on anything to do with the ridge?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll certainly work with the, I say, can see the, the folks walking up to the mic. I know we'll be working with the team, the city team on this. I know that if you're looking at the older part of town, want to be looking at critical areas, those types of things. And I know there's a lot of things that you may not have control over in terms of if areas on the ridge are getting built out and under a development agreement. So, you know, part of narrowing down your strategies and actions may be looking at, you know, what are the range of things that you're wanting to take a crack at that you actually think would influence change. Uh, so, and, and knowing that there's a lot of things that are just not in your control on those things. So you, you're not going to be able to snap your fingers, change some codes. And then all of a sudden, you know, certain areas of the town redeveloped because you want it to happen. So I think we can be pretty pragmatic about that, but I'll defer to the, the staff if they have any, if they have any other comments on that.
I, I was just going to simply say that, um, you know, part of this process is to review what options exist. First off, uh, to kind of weigh what we can do with what the data that we gather shows us and best practices and policies that other cities in the area have. Luckily for us, we're not the only master development plan, uh, master development structure in the region. There's, there's several. So there's a potential to review what other jurisdictions have done within that kind of parameter, within that, that a box, so to speak. And so while we don't have them yet, it's not like we're ignoring the ridge. That's definitely going to be a big aspect of what, what opportunities exist really citywide. This is not a, this is not a downtown plan only. This is a, it's wider than that. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Goodman?
For me, thank you. Yeah, just a quick question, Mr. White. Thanks for the presentation. Really informative. I'm just wondering, obviously we look at plans based on our region and our specific communities here. And I'm wondering if the output of the plan will also consider some of the macroeconomic factors that are happening today in the economy and probably some of the things that are trending. You know, things like, you know, are we on the tip of a recession? We need to factor some of those things into affordability. You know, we're looking at one, three, five in year, five year out kind of planning, or what, what does that output look like? And what variables do we put in into some of the, some of the outputs here?
Yeah. I mean, I think that the housing needs analysis can identify the types of housing that are needed and how we're, how you're doing in terms of, of, of providing for a variety of housing types at different income levels. The one thing I think just to keep in mind, uh, as long range planners, you know, where your comprehensive plan is looking out 20 years. So you know that you're looking at, you're looking at planning for growth and employment and capital facilities and parks and all of those things over a long period of time. That's usually going to transcend different cycles that what you hope commissioners, that you're nimble and that you're, you know, changing your codes and policies to keep up with things that are necessary. That's the hard thing is the, you know, your planning department is on the kind of the bleeding edge of the economy. So it's really hard not to be in reactionary mode because you're reacting to what the market's telling you. But this can provide you a lot of strategies to say, how, how do you get, how do you, how do you, you know, how are you proactive? And, and, um, you know, get your code or your policies in shape so that you're there at the time when the market says, hey, let's go. And it's also something that the community wants.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Mather?
Well, thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson, do you have any questions, comments?
I took a bunch of notes and being a council member and now the, the chair of the community development committee, I don't want to put my thumb too much on the scale on the commission, but, um, uh, I, I think what I will do is just kind of, just put out a couple of thoughts, just the things to just keep in mind as we go into this. The, the issue of gentrification and displacing people, and I'm glad that that came up in the presentation. So there are a number of different ways of addressing that, that we could look at. One thing that some cities have put in place is something called a, I believe it's called a right of first refusal. So that's essentially the idea that someone who lives somewhere that's renting, if that property is going to be developed, that they're able to at least have the opportunity to try to continue living there. Uh, and there are a number of different ways of doing that. But, um, yeah, that's just something to think about. Uh, the distribution of affordable housing, the way that we went into affordable housing with the ridge had a few fundamental flaws to it. There was a development that's very close to my house that was intended to be affordable, but with the, uh, but the clause for the affordability sunset with the deed. So as soon as someone sold the house, uh, then it went right onto the market at fair market rate. So, um, you know, just thinking about how, how we're distribute, distributing, distributing, distributing. I don't know. I had trouble with that word, uh, affordable housing. So we're not concentrating people with different means into certain parts of the city to the best of our ability. And there are a number of ways again to address that. I, I certainly have a fear of new development being just exclusively luxury developments. So there are ways to address that as well, uh, through code changes, through zoning and, and things like that. Yeah. And, and then addressing the issue of the, the missing middle housing. I, I think we have more than enough single family homes and we, we could definitely do some diversification of our housing types. Uh, so those are all things that I know you guys will be addressing, but those are just the specific things that kind of caught in my mind that, that are of interest to me at the moment. And I'm sure there will be more things too. Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to say, uh, uh, so we're in the early part of this. And so the reason I'm even bringing, talking now is to kind of remind everyone that if you have ideas like this, this is when, this is why we're here. We're here to bring back. What I have before this meeting is, you know, I have some council goals. I have discussions with mayor, with administration, history, uh, working with the city, but it's better to sit down and kind of rehash what we think is best ideas and best concerns, uh, things to address and things to be aware of. So please, uh, if it doesn't end tonight, if you have more ideas, you know, write them down, wake up at three in the morning, keep a notepad next to your nightstand and be ready for it. Um, and then send them to me directly and I'll send them to Clay and we could share and go over it and then bring up and kind of like bring all the ideas to the front and see what options exist in, you know, and I'm going to lean on Clay to help us identify what, you know, how, how would something like that work for this city? And not just, you know, other ones that maybe came up with the idea, but you know, find out how can we make it match? So I appreciate that. And I just wanted to make sure everyone felt comfortable also expressing their ideas as well.
Good, good. Mayor Ross?
So thank you for the presentation. Um, we've been very excited that we're doing the, the housing action plan. And, and it's actually Snoval, it's Snoqualmie Valley wide. And so it also includes North Bend, I believe Carnation and Duval. Is it Duval too? So this really gives us a huge scope of, of the valley. And so, you know, this will help determine, you know, how many affordable housing throughout do we need? Or as we talked about the missing middle and also, um, you know, where are the areas that we can build? And we know that in Snoqualmie, we're limited right now unless we annex in the UGA area, or there's also properties out near I-90 that are in King County that, that we are working with King County to see if we can actually get those moved in the UGA. So there might be some properties available. But I'm excited this is going to be done valley wise. We can, you know, kind of figure out what, what needs to be done throughout the valley, not just necessarily in Snoqualmie only. So, thank you.
And Mayor, I think that's a really good point because if you're planning for, you know, when, when I look at what the statute talks about for a variety of housing types at different income levels, and that's certainly a challenge. But I don't think that it should have been intended that every community would plan for all housing types at all income levels, because everybody's circumstances. So I mean, that's why you have countywide planning policies. That's why you, like you're doing a shared housing needs analysis with other communities. So you can kind of see, you may be really strong in providing this type of housing and somebody else has this option. And you know, like, I think there's a lot of community conversations together to, to tackle this issue. So I think, I think having that regional data will be helpful, seeing trends, what's happening. Um, and, and that'll tease out some options as well.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. I do have a couple of comments. Um, one, I'd just like to echo what Councilmember Johnson mentioned. We bumped into it a few times. And if you walk around the ridge, you can see where they attempted to do affordable housing. But, uh, I don't believe there's a code way to lock the deed in, or either that unwillingness to do it such that whoever first occupies that house can't capture the appreciation, in which case it hits the market. And way it may have started affordable and then turns not affordable. So I, I think it'd be good if we could understand what actions could be taken in that regard, because last time we heard this and, you know, discussed, and it was a development that didn't happen. It was salish. It didn't sound like there was a way to do that. There was a code way to do that. Now, maybe I misunderstand, but I would like to get educated on that. Second, um, Clay, you mentioned that there were some very successful HAPs and maybe they fit, maybe they don't, but I certainly would be interested to see if we could look at a, you know, here is a HAP that you consider successful and what actions did they take on, on something our size? And obviously something the size of Bellevue wouldn't work, but if there's something, you know, the size of the Snoqualmie Valley that you said, boy, there's a HAP that I think really worked well, I think would benefit us all if we could take a look at that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the way that I would see this, I'll still work, you know, be working with Dylan to line this up is you'll probably get some briefings on the housing needs analysis. So you can start kind of understanding the housing data. And then I would think that we would be working together before preparing a draft housing action plan to be looking at the different strategies and actions that you could be, you could be looking at as a community. And some of those, I mean, it certainly can tease out ideas that have come from other communities. Uh, there's also some state guidance that outlines a lot of different actions that you could be looking at. So we'll, we'll bring all of those things forward for you. So that, um, you know, and help facilitate that. So we can get some really good ideas and then we can create a draft. And then we can get a lot of comments on the draft, refine that. And then we can, you know, settle on a, a set of of final strategies and actions that you could consider taking action on in the future.
Yeah. And that was actually, uh, the third thing I was going to mention, the needs analysis, is that going to cover the 20 year period? Similar to the new comprehensive plan? When we, we get that information?
Um, I mean, it's going to have a whole bunch of data for you. I mean, I'm, I'm not, uh, I'd have to just make sure, I don't want to speak for the other group that's doing that. But I mean, it should have a whole bunch of data for you, not on housing availability, but your housing stock. You know, sometimes you do like travel models where you can see how many people that live in Snoqualmie, work in Snoqualmie and vice versa. How many people are commuting in? Um, you can look at, uh, you know, cause when you're talking about affordable housing, you know, that's kind of a, a term, a loose term in terms of affordable housing at different income levels. So you can kind of look at, uh, if people that, uh, with certain jobs uh, and what their, what their average income is in the, in the region, and then what would they be able to afford in Snoqualmie based upon that income? So I mean, there's just all sorts of neat things to tease out. Here's what I can offer you though, is that if there's something that isn't covered in the regional HNA, then we can help pull any additional data uh, that you want to see after that process concludes. So, but I would assume that you're going to get some briefings in a couple of months on the regional HNA and, and the data that they pull.
Yeah, definitely looking forward to that.
Yeah. It, there, it's soup. It's always very, very interesting. I think you, you'll, I'm sure you'll really enjoy it.
And you mentioned a number, I think it'd 1.6 million is going to increase. Is that statewide?
That is in King, Pierce, Snohomish and Kitsap counties between 2017 and 2050, 1.6 million people, 1.2 million jobs.
King Pierce and what was the third one?
Uh, King Pierce, Snohomish and Kitsap.
Okay, okay. And 1.6, 1.2 million jobs. Okay. That is a very, very big number. Okay. That's all I have. And has anybody else have any questions? All right. Thank you, Clay. I found that informative and I am glad we recorded the presentation for, uh, for others to take a look at.
Great. Well, look forward to being in front of you again, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to the next agenda item, Community Development Department Staffing Update. I understand we've done the intro. Anything more to add to that? From the staff?
No, he was just introducing the new, um, the new staff, which Dylan already took care of for us. So.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. At that point, we'll move on to items of planning commissioner interest. So I'll do a poll. Commissioner Goodman, any items of interest?
Um, I, I, I know this may not be the appropriate place to bring this up, but I, I, I don't know what else to do. And then I've been waiting a couple of months for somebody to reset my password on my, on my sno, on my Snoqualmie email account. So if there's anybody who can help make that happen, um, I've been waiting quite a while for it. Again, sorry to bring that up here, but I'm kind of, I've, I've kind of at my wits end about it.
Well, since we're kind of on a shoestring core, I think it's important.
I will add that to my list. I've got several people, um, and by, I'll get, I'm going to get an IT ticket in on this. So.
Commissioner Goodman, I'm in the same boat, by the way. Although I did have somebody reach out from my T, somebody very pleasant and, um, you know, very cordial, but I just have not had the opportunity to connect with them during the work.
Okay. Commissioner Goodman, anything else?
So yeah, apologies for using commission time on that, but, um, that's all for me today.
Okay. Chris, do you have anything else from you?
No, just good to be back at a meeting.
Okay. I, I do have one thing and, um, so I'm not sure if it's in the purview of this, but I certainly wanted to bring it up. So right after the last meeting, it was a couple of days after that. Uh, we got a notice from our place on the ridge that our house needed backflow assembly test. And it was required that shut our water off June 30th. So we had to hustle and get it done. And I thought, well, geez, I've been here seven and a half years, never had this test. And I was informed it was an annual requirement. And I thought, well, it must be for fungry then, right? Well, no, backfill assembly test is so that bad water doesn't contaminate your drinking water. So it sounds like an important thing to do. You know, so we got, we hustled, we got it done. We passed the test, but I just wanted to ask, was that unusual? Is other folks in the city going through that?
Yeah. So, um, prior to being, um, uh, to joining the city council, I was the, uh, president of, uh, my sub HOA up on the ridge. As you know, as the master ROA, and then there are the little sub HOAs. And, uh, our HOA, uh, had that as part of our duties that we would schedule when everyone would do it within our HOA. So that we would get that, the alarm testing, sprinkler testing and the backflow all done at the same time. So yeah, my understanding is, yeah, that's, that's something that you gotta do every year. And I don't know if you're part of a sub HOA or anything, but, uh, if you are, or if anyone else is, it's something that if you are, or if anyone else is, it's something that if it's not getting done, you could bring up with your sub HOA to get that done.
Yeah. It wasn't hard to get it done. I just wasn't aware of it. So yeah, I was, I was kind of puzzled about that. But that is an annual requirement for businesses, residents, everybody, right? Okay. Um, yeah. Second thing, and this is again, not necessarily purvey of the city, but I just wanted to kind of ask the question. You know, one thing moving to Washington seven years ago, I was very excited the fact that moving to a state with the largest power plant in the US, used to be one of the largest ones in the world. 90% of our electricity is renewable hydro. So I'm kind of puzzled by the fact that our electricity is going to go up 16.34% is the request that PSC made to the UTC for January 1st, 2023. And then 2.6 and 1.23 and 16.34% seems like a chunk. And, and that's the electricity. There's a similar increase for the gas. But I was just curious, is, does the, I mean, that seems like the utility is asking for that for a purpose. Is that decarbonization? I mean, what is that? Cause that's, that's a heck of a year on year increase. And yet it may not be our purview, but it sure seems odd to me that with all this hydro that we need an increase of this magnitude in one year.
Yeah, I'd say that's not, that that's not directly in the city's purview. So the, in, in broad terms, the individual utilities within the state, and they're all regulated by the state UTC, all have different sort of generation sources. And so the, the large hydroelectric dams, you know, on the Columbia River and other rivers aren't all owned. In fact, none of them are owned by PSC specifically. They're owned by the federal government through the Bonneville Power Administration is one. They're owned by some of the public utility districts. So you know, some of those counties like the Shalane County PUD owns a couple of the dams. And so they're the ones who get the power from the dams and then sell it elsewhere. PSC's generation mix has actually been, is actually not that. How do I put this? It's, it's heavier on carbon heavy sources than some others. PSC still owns, although it is divesting itself of a a significant interest in a coal power plant over in Montana. And so as PSC divests itself of that particular source, they are having to therefore invest money in other sources of generation, you know, whether it's buying power from one of the PUDs that has excess or building new power plants elsewhere. So that's one component. The other component is of course, there are state laws that are talking about increasing the renewable percentage in our electricity grid. PSC, of course, is subject to that. And so that's one of the reasons they're divesting the cells of this coal plant. But to compensate, they need to go then invest in some renewable sources. They obviously own the large wind farm over there just east of Ellensburg, the Wild Horse facility. They're investing in additional wind farms and solar and some other things. So these sources are more expensive than the facilities PSC already owns and is, and it has been depreciating for a number of years. So that's, I think, one of the big drivers of why the rates are going up. Now, you know, you also have, of course, the increasing cost of of the fuel supply, you know, that whether it's natural gas or, or other things, because PSC has a lot of gas power plants as well. And the cost of natural gas keeps going up. The same as you see the price of the gas stations for the gas we put in our cars. So the, I think those are the, the main big drivers. I would say if you have comments about the utility rates and the proposals, you know, the, what the UTC takes public comment and they do take the public comment very seriously. As a side note, I know some of the, a couple of lawyers in the Attorney General's office that work on this and they, they've assured me, yes, they absolutely take the public comment seriously and they, and they push back on the utilities where necessary. So definitely get your comments in, you know, and it has in the past resulted in, in the requests being modified by the UTC to a different, a different percentage, because the, that's the UTC's mission is to, they're, they're trying to balance the the utility needs and the utility and, and these investor utilities like PSC do get to make a a profit, a reasonable level of profit, but not an obscene level of profit because they are also like the UTC, that is, is also looking out for the various rate payers in the state. So sorry for the long-winded answer on that for something that's not solely within the city's purview.
No, I was, I mean, I can go to the UTC. It was, it is a one-year 16% bump drops to 2.6 and then 1.2%. So it seems like something happened. We're paying for something very specific, but I'll follow up with the UTC then. I don't want to belabor that any further. That is all I have. Anybody have anything else of interest? Okay, then I'll move that the meeting be adjourned. Have a second? Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I, I.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.